I'm the managing editor of Willamette Week. We are here for a District Four City Council interview. This is one of four District Four City Council interviews we're doing. It's the fourth of the four District Four City Council interviews that we're doing. It's a pleasure to have all of you here. The way we do endorsement interviews at Willamette Week, if you have not done them before, is that we are attempting over the next, what's probably going to be 90 minutes. It might be a little less than that, but my suspicion is that with this many people in the room, it will take 90 minutes. We're going to attempt to try to get to know you a little bit and decide who among the roughly 45 candidates in this district, which six people will be endorsing. We will be endorsing on a ranked choice bracket, the six people, much like people will be throwing out their ballots, one through six.
Can you scoot over just a little bit so that he can scoot over just a little bit so that I can be at the table and not be in the way of tone? Totally appreciate it.
That's fine.
This doesn't wheel and I don't move.
You'll stand up?
Okay, but I want to be sure to be able to see. I don't like going down in the picture.
Absolutely. Just want to make sure that I'm not in the background.
That's fine.
I appreciate it.
I didn't want to be going down in the picture.
Yeah, exactly.
Meaning when you talk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do not guarantee equal time. That means that at some point, we may choose to ask follow-up questions to one individual or another based on their answers. That doesn't necessarily indicate who we're going to endorse or who we like the best. It simply means that we're trying to get more answers on a question that we think may be important to our readers as they make their decisions. We are going to be pretty strict about keeping to time limits today, given how many people are in the room. If you go past your time limit when I say this is a two-minute answer or a one-minute answer, I will interrupt you and end this conversation.
In a nice way.
Probably not all the time.
We'll see.
This is like my 14th this week. I am running out of patience and pleasantness. So.
Enjoy the club. Enjoy.
At any rate, having said all that, we're delighted to have you here. And I would ask that, starting with Sarah, that each of you take about two minutes and tell us who you are, a little biography. And when I say a little biography, I say this with much affection for all of you, a little biography, meaning like, some people have told us about which high school they attended and then what they did during their, like, senior year trip. I don't care. I just want to know about, like, the relevant information for why it is that you're running for office. And then tell us why you're running for office. So, without further ado, and with that little speech over, Sarah.
All right. I'm Sarah Silke. I'm a mom, an engineer, a public servant, and a problem solver. I grew up in and around Portland, the oldest of six kids. My parents did the Portland Saturday Market, so I spent a lot of time running around under the Burnside Bridge. It was a little safer back then, but I still experienced the instability of poverty. I was fortunate and did very well in school, and I was able to go to Reed College and then on to get a PhD in environmental engineering at UC Berkeley. I came back to Portland to raise my family. I've been working for the Portland Water Bureau for the last 10, well, 12 years. I'm also a union steward. I went into environmental engineering because I was passionate about our ecosystems and, you know, back then it was a lot of jobs versus jobs, which I was like, this is not a real thing. We can't have good jobs and healthy ecosystems, and here are the technologies that can do it. As somebody who's been working for the city for a while, I have some firsthand experience with what's working, what's not working in the city, and how the dysfunctional management impairs our ability to provide basic services to our residents. I'm a climate champion. I'm kind of, I'm not a politician. I'm just somebody who lives here and wants things to work. Yeah, I'll get that.
Great, thank you. Eric.
Hi, Eric Zimmerman. I'm a lifelong Oregonian, born in Portland. My mom's a retired Portland Public Schools teacher. I think most folks know that I've been in local government now for quite a while. I'm currently the chief of staff for Julia Brem Edwards, and I've worked as the chief of staff for another county commissioner several years ago. I've also been a senior advisor in City Hall for the downtown recovery after '22. And I've also been a deputy city manager in two cities in Oregon, which I bring up because of the direction that our government is moving. I think it's a relevant experience. And the other side of my life, I've spent 17 years in service as an Army National Guard officer. I've, I always come home, but that job has taken me across the world at various times, across the state. I've responded to emergencies. I've served diplomatically and in combat and in peacekeeping situations. You know, my whole family is here. I'm the uncle to nieces and nephews, and I think a lot of the reasons that I'm running today are for the same reasons that I came back to City Hall after 2022, when the city, I think, was still deeply in crisis. I think that we have successfully at least pointed the direction for the city, but I don't know that we're all the way there in terms of the next several steps that need to be taken. Because, you know, our shelter situation is still underfunded and not developed further enough. Our enforcement of basic societal laws and societal expectations is lax. And we are cleaning up and moving through a city that is still recovering and trying to figure out what the next chapter is. I'm running because I think public safety is front of mind for Portlanders and it's front of mind for me. And I'm running because I think a shelter strategy, a sobering plan, and a housing reform package are the kind of things that help us go into that next chapter.
Great, thank you. Lisa.
Yeah. My name is Lisa Freeman. I live in Multnomah Village with my partner and our two kids. I'm a government transition and community safety expert. I've been in public service for 20 years. I started my public service as a Peace Corps volunteer in Central Asia, and then I went on to work for the US government.
Where was that?
In Kyrgyzstan.
Wow.
Yeah. And from there, I went on to work for the US government's Office of Transition Initiatives, supporting governments and communities in places like Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Syria to navigate government transitions and build confidence in new political systems. I was really inspired by the people I got to work with around the world and decided to shift my career to work locally. And most recently, worked at the city's Community Safety Division, leading efforts to reduce gun violence, which gun violence is down over 30% since its peak in 2022. I also worked on supporting innovations to our public safety system, especially alternatives like Portland Street Response. I chose this moment to run for city council because I've spent my career working in moments of change, and I know how to work in crisis and transition. And this is the moment where my experience means the most for Portland. I know that transitions are times of uncertainty and anxiety and also times of great opportunity. And I want to bring my expertise to bear to make sure that our government transition is effective and that we can build confidence with Portlanders that it's working. So I believe I'm uniquely qualified for this particular moment.
Which government transition abroad looks most like Portland? Like, are we Kyrgyzstan or? Think about it. Be interested.
I mean, in some ways, it seems different. Syria in some ways. Not because Portland is like Syria, but in terms of the fact that especially in the areas where the regime did lose control and the opposition took over, you have a whole new ruling party that has to govern. So you go from being the opposition to having to deliver services. You've got to pick up the rubble and deliver waste management and get people identification cards. And so that was a huge political transition, even though that part of the opposition ultimately is a sad situation right now.
Thank you.
Ben. I'm Ben. I'm Ben Huffert, running for District Four. I am an architect who moved to Portland here 30 years ago. I chose Portland because it was the city on the hill. It was a different city than the rest of America in terms of sprawl and other things. And I thought, this is where I want to do my work. I've worked at a couple of the larger firms, and then 18 years ago, I started my firm, Design Department. We do mostly what I call hospitality, but that's places where people want to be. It's restaurants, bars, it's hotel lobbies, it's things where people are attracted to come and spend money. Things changed for me a couple of years ago. When Portland got rough, I got sort of cynical and disappointed in it. I'm really frustrated about a political system where you govern by press release and say, here's what we're going to do and here's what's going to happen in two years. And in my job, you know, we do 15 projects a year, and if you don't open a project or you don't build it, you aim for a budget, you aim for a schedule, you aim for an opening. If you don't succeed, you failed. And that's not how the county works and that's not how the city works. So I'm a lifelong Democrat. I moved here as a, the Democratic wing of the Democratic Party, and I remain that way. But I don't think this is an election about ideology. I think it's an election about getting things done, and that's what I do. I would like to see a city where I can take my kids to the park without telling them, having to explain life lessons to them. I'd like to see a city where I can run a business downtown and not have my front door broken consistently, and to have customers feeling like they can be there. I'd like to have a city where we have shelters for the people who live in tents. And as an architect, I think 1,200 shelter beds should take eight weeks, not eight months or a year. You know, I actually ended the race when I got an email from the mayor's office saying, we're going to provide 1,200 new shelter beds this year. And I went and found the same email from last year that said, we're going to provide 1,200 new shelter beds. And again, this is something that we should be able to execute on, we should be able to deliver. Portland has its values, we can do that. So, and I want to end with negativity, I want to end with positivity, which is, we can be whatever city we want to be. Portland is going to grow. We're going to grow because of demographic challenges, we're going to grow because of environmental challenges. People are going to continue to come here. And the goal is not to be the Portland that we were eight years ago. It's not even to be a Portland that fixes the problems right now. It's to think ahead. Many of these people were at a climate forum yesterday, and I said, you know, if we had the population of New York, it would be 1,860. All of the decisions that we get to make are ahead of us, and that's really exciting from an urban design perspective and from what an architecture does. We have a housing crisis, that's a specialty of mine, and I'll wrap up with that, but choosing how we build is why I want to be involved.
Have you run before for anything?
Never.
Any public service?
I am new to politics, I am old at problem solving.
Any boards?
Neighborhood associations hand. I was on Hosford Abernathy with Tina Kotek. I've been involved in neighborhoods.
Okay.
Thank you. Tony Morris, candidate for Portland City Council, District Four, sixth-generation Oregonian. I live in Woodstock with my wife and our two kids. I'm running for Portland City Council because our city has an addiction crisis, and I think we need a recovery champion in City Hall to help solve it. I'm a person in long-term recovery. I've been in recovery for over seven and a half years. I'm the former policy director of Oregon Recovers. And in that role, I worked extensively in Salem, done a lot of work with the legislature. I've briefed the governor on the addiction crisis. And as someone who has as much legislative experience as I do, that in part is what motivated me to step up and run for city council right now. One of the first big lifts that this first city council is going to have is to stand up and create a functional legislative body where 12 Portlanders from across every quadrant of the city is going to have to come together and work collaboratively to start solving problems. I think in this moment, it's imperative that we get some folks who understand how the legislative process works. I'm someone who knows how to count votes, who has shepherded legislation through the building in Salem. And yes, in some cases, I've stopped legislation I wanted to see end. Those are important skills in this new system of government that I'm excited about bringing to the fore and making my part of service. Also, to Lisa's point about this transitionary time, when things are transitionary, we need to make sure that we have folks who can work well with others. There are a number of endorsers of mine that represent the entire spectrum of political thought and approach. I'm endorsed by 21 unions, which is by far the most of any candidate in this district. I'm also endorsed by various organizations of the business community. I'm endorsed by over 20 elected officials. I'm one of very few candidates to be endorsed by both Carmen and Renee. I'm also endorsed by Dan Ryan. And I'm very proud to be endorsed by Maxine Dexter, who has, among other things, made the addiction crisis a very visible issue and helped generate more attention to it. And I'm excited that she's going to continue to do so in Washington DC. When I talk about the addiction crisis, it is something that impacts every issue that Portland is really struggling with right now. There is so much overlap between addiction and public safety, housing and homelessness, and really, as we've seen with 110 and then the transition into House Bill 4002, reputation of our city. If Portland is going to continue to grow in a positive way, we need to rehabilitate what people think of Portland. I'm sure everyone in this room remembers when the New York Times had a bit of a crush on Portland. It's like we were Brooklyn or something, and we later became a cautionary tale. Portland has now recriminalized drugs, and it is really crucial that we have someone who understands the relationship between behavioral health and public safety and homelessness.
Great, thank you. Moses.
My name is Moses Ross. I am a 35-year resident of this beautiful city. I'm a 20-year resident of Multnomah Village. I'm a 17-year, for 17 years, I've been a single father to a beautiful daughter who is now in her 20, who is 20 and now is a productive member of our community. I've seen firsthand, as chair of the Neighborhood Association for eight years, the negative effects of the current crisis that we have had. And to me, it all boils down to livability issues, the livability and the enjoyment and the benefits of living in Portland. I'm very frustrated with our city government and how they have allowed us to get to this point. But I'm very hopeful that with this, through the wisdom of voters to implement this new form of government here at the city, I'm very hopeful that we, as a legislative body now, will be able to actually start to address these problems collaboratively with a focus on the long-term benefits of livability here in the city of Portland. I come from very, my mother comes from very humble beginnings. They, my grandparents immigrated from Mexico, and they worked in the fields in the Mid-Willamette Valley. And what that taught me is that you, as a person, need to aspire to strive for the American dream, for not only for your progeny, but for your community as well. And so I've taken that perspective into account when I've worked at the Neighborhood Association level, to make our Neighborhood Association relevant to the community. How do we do that? Well, we do that by making sure that we are improving the livability, that we're giving opportunity for the community to be involved, that we show respect to the people in our community by listening, learning, and applying what they are telling us to our, to the situation. And unfortunately, our current city government has not been listening to the residents. And so I plan to go in there and with the perspective of listening, learning, and respecting the perspective of the folks in the neighborhood.
Great, thank you.
Have you run for stuff?
In 2017, I ran for the Portland Community College Board. I came in third. There were three candidates. But I like to think that it was a proving ground for me to, and I've taken that experience of running into this race. And so I've.
And civic engagement, did I miss?
I have 20 years of civic engagement. I have served on the State of Oregon Citizens Review Board, reviewing foster children's placements. I have served on the Multnomah County Community Budget Advisory Committee. I have served as a member of the Charter Review Committee from Multnomah County in 2015 and championed campaign finance reform, which then in turn led to the, being placed on the ballot, which then in turn changed the campaign finance regulations as it comes to Multnomah County, which gave us the impetus to change it in the city.
Thank you, thank you. Bob.
Hi, my name is Bob Weinstein. I'm running for city council in District Four. I live in Northwest, essentially across the street on Raleigh. So I'm very familiar with this part of the district, and I've learned a lot about other parts of the district. I grew up in Western Massachusetts. After getting a bachelor's at University of Massachusetts, I came to the University of Oregon, and I got a master's in special education. I had a choice then between a job in Aspen, Colorado, or Ketchikan, Alaska. I went north. I was a flying, if you will, special education teacher, flying to remote communities in a huge area in southeast Alaska, originally all of southeast Alaska, and after restructuring, half of southeast Alaska, 20,000 square miles. I became superintendent of the school district eight years later. I did that for 12 years. Towards the end of that part of my career, I ran for the city council in Ketchikan on a budget reform platform. I was elected along with some other people. I served two six-year terms. I then ran against two city council leaders for mayor. I won on a landslide in my first election with 45 votes. And I served four three-year terms, which is the longest tenure of any mayor in Ketchikan history, including prior to statehood. After that, a few months before the end of my fourth term, I was offered a job with United States Senator Mark Begedge of Alaska as a state staffer. I worked on policy issues, including the Tonnus National Forest, the largest, most controversial national forest in the United States. And I also, which I think is very relevant to what I hope will be a part of our conversation, I did a lot of constituent work. So between being superintendent and mayor and council member, I learned a lot about public budgets, I learned a lot about public policies, and I also learned that people want to contact their elected officials and they want to get an answer. Why am I running for council? I'm running for council because as I watched the transition and watched the actions of the transition team, I became very concerned that the intent of the voters when the charter was revised was not going to be implemented. As an example, they created a lot of new administrative positions, and after an initial recommendation of two staffers per council member, they lowered that to one. There is no way one staffer can do the job for a city council member when you consider answering phone, answering emails, going to meetings with or without the principal and so on. I know that from my senate experience. So from my view, the transition team has set out to deliberately kneecap the functions of the new city council. And that's one of the reasons I'm running. I think it's important that we have somebody with my experience who knows how a mayor works with a city administrator, how a council member works with a mayor and city administrator, and how an elected official should talk with community organizations, neighborhood associations, and individuals who have concerns. And I think the new council could use that experience.
Thank you. Kelly.
I'm Kelly Doyle. I am going to say my high school, I went to Lincoln, 70. Well, we're supposed to have our 50th anniversary and we didn't do it. I was on the Cardinal Times, a very fine newspaper. And the reason I'm running for it is I'm totally indigenous. I was born in a manual, I went to Lincoln. And I will be griefed now, but more later. I've been an attorney since 1984, a member of the federal bar since 1986. I'm a member of the Red Ron Tribal Bar, but I owe them money, they owe me money. Since 2017, I do all sorts of law and all sorts of things, and that, I was afraid I was going to be here because I had two, but that's TMI. I am running for city council because I need the work. I've been in soil practice all my life.
All right, thank you. As all of you know, and as some of you who have already discussed, this is a legislative body that will not be administering the bureaus, that's being moved over to a city administrator under the auspices of the mayor. So that leaves you with the job of setting policy. So I would ask each of you, I'm going to start in the middle this time, work our way around, but ask each of you to tell me what the first ordinance you would bring to city council is. And Lisa, we'll start with you.
That's our time.
Oh, that's a great question, thank you. Let's say one minute on each person.
Ordinance about funding, is that right, Eric? Ordinance not funding.
Can be an ordinance about.
What's the first thing you would do?
First policy you're going to bring, like, obviously not management issues, but policy.
Yeah. The first policy that I would bring forward is to expand and fund Portland Street Response for 24/7 operations. This is something that was previously done by a previously, by a previous council, and that funding was pulled back. It's something that the community has demanded over and over again in many public sessions, that they want more Portland Street Response, not less. So this would be a way to very quickly demonstrate to community demands that we are a council that has heard what they've said and we're going to do what they've asked for, especially in a situation where we are dealing with concerns about safety and concerns about mental health. This is the best responder to send to those crises, and we can do a lot more to support them and make sure that they're able to respond to those calls. I would also include in that expanding the call types that they can respond to and making sure that they have the ability to transport people to destinations.
How do you pay for it?
Yeah, there is funding to do this. We can look across the city budget and see where there's funding available. Our total public safety budget is somewhere in the realm of $560 million. And to really fully fund Portland Street Response, I think we need about $15 million, and we currently have $10. So it's really not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things to find. And I think we've seen that when there are public safety demands, the money can be found so we can find it for Portland Street Response.
Okay. Eric.
I think my focus here would be in the public safety realm. I think a lot of attention has been on improving our 911 system, improving response times, but I also think, and so I think that work is happening. What I'll propose is, I'd like us to increase the number of neighborhood response teams that we have within the bureau. And a lot of folks aren't familiar with what those are, but I think a lot of folks have worked with them and not realized it. We have a neighborhood response team in the bureau in each precinct. They work on, not on our 911 emergency calls, but they work on the neighborhood entrenched problems that I think a lot of Portlanders right now are very concerned about. And I think that when Portland talks about community policing, neighborhood response teams are our closest example of that and where it's working. I've worked with them, I think they're very effective. I think as our ranks in the Portland Police grow, I would like the chief to know that the council supports him or her investing more of the time when there's enough officers to get them into neighborhood response teams.
Great, thank you. Sarah.
Yeah, I've been working in permitting for the last two years for the city of Portland, so I appreciate the attempts that have been made to improve things. However, it's not really an issue of where people sit, it's an issue of our code is actually conflicting in many places. So the first ordinance that I would bring would be to align some of those conflicting codes. And that's, you know, it's very bureaucratic and humdrum, but we have a housing crisis, and in order to get more housing built, we need to address that, and we also need to send a signal to developers that it doesn't, it's not going to take a year and a half to get a permit in Portland anymore, it's going to take six weeks. And that, that's going to take some code reform, and so that's what I'll do.
Did Carmen reveal to us down the road on this with her changes?
Sorry.
Did Carmen, like, help us with consolidation or even more on the Megas Maps train where, I think he was the one that.
You know, I think this is all theatrics. It's really theatrics until we get the technology and the code improvements done, so.
So her changes, because that's been a big focus of hers, right?
Yes.
Has it been for an honor?
I mean, it doesn't, I think it's, it is not, so there are many tried and true models that have been done in other places, and the one we're in right now is not one of them. And so I, the big thing that needs to be done is the authority between the chief, the administrators of each bureau, the chief engineers and the forester, they're still working on that. So maybe that will resolve itself, but it might take city council saying, this is who is in charge and the rest of you are going to have to listen, because that hasn't been done yet.
Okay, thank you.
I think, and that's the problem. A lot of, everyone has demands, they have things they want to get done. You're going, the council is just to give counsel. So the way a council gives counsel is we listen. And when I say the first thing I want to get done, and everyone laughs at, well, there's two things. One is I want to make sure that we have the lines of communication open so that people can actually talk to us and listen to us, and that we can listen to them, which is actually more important.
That's a valid answer.
Yeah. Bob.
Yeah, thank you for the question. In the context of the fact that unless you make twenty-five billion dollars or more, people in Portland have the highest combined state and local tax rate in the United States, we don't have a revenue problem. Other cities are doing more with less. So my first ordinance or policy would be to recommend that for budget purposes, the city adopt what I call a critical needs budget policy. That means that seventy-five percent or more of the budget would be allocated to issues that people, not only in District Four, but across the city care about. That includes homelessness, which is adequately funded but ineffective implemented, it includes public safety, and I'll get back to that in a second. It includes park maintenance, it includes neighborhood livability, it includes fixing our potholes. Getting back to public safety, we are understaffed across the board. We need to increase the number of police officers. A study in September of twenty twenty-two recommended six new fire stations so that every Portland resident had the same four-minute, I believe, response time. And we've already heard about Portland Street Response. So I support a multi-pronged approach to staffing up public safety. And we clearly need to do things with, for example, park maintenance. Park maintenance is not being done, there's a huge backlog. They have billions of SDC money, or whatever it's called, that can be used to build new parks. Why on earth would you build new parks if you're not maintaining what we have? So there needs to be a focus on the budget. Based on my thirty years of public budget, and it's clearly the main policy document for any government. That's where any government, local, state, or federal, determines its priorities.
Great, thank you. Who goes into that twenty-five percent? I mean, the seventy-five, what does this mean? Some stuff's going to get cut?
I would think some, some lower priorities would be cut. If you're going to ask me to name them, I'm not an expert in the city budget. But clearly, if you read and watch what's going on, they spend millions and millions and millions on things that don't have to be done. I'll give you an example. They created these six new deputy city administrators.
Hired them.
And then in February, Human Resources recommended that each of them get two hundred nine thousand dollars in severance pay if they are not kept on by the new mayor and city administrator. The theory was they'd have to hire from without. This is how you would attract executives from Nike or Intel or something. In fact, all of them were either current city employees or somebody who had left recently and come back. I went to the council and I said, nobody in the public sector does that. Your police and firefighters don't get severance. Nobody in the private sector gets six months of severance after six to twelve months of work. That's one point two five four million. It may be a drop in the bucket, but I believe that an examination of the city's budget would show example after example after example.
Okay, thank you.
Can I give you one more?
Quickly.
Okay. I was at a meeting with the interim city administrator, and he mentioned as part of the restructuring, they created four new offices, including communications. He then went on to say, oh, we have eighty-five communications positions out in the bureaus. Do the math, eighty-five divided by six service years. Eighty-five communication persons. They never looked at, should we consolidate and reduce that number if we're creating this centralized office? Instead, they left it all in place. It makes no sense.
Yeah, well, former journalists need employment.
I don't have that.
Current ones.
Need employment, yeah. I heard it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Since day one, I have been an advocate of the need to revitalize our beautiful city. People do not feel safe going downtown. I feel the downtown core is the key component to Portland economic engine. It's the starting point. And in my view, the, you know, the downtown core needs to be clean, it needs to be safe and inviting to tourists and residents. Currently, people just don't feel safe in downtown Portland. And I believe in the theory of the broken windows, you know? If you allow things to be, if you allow things to be unkept, well, that's what you attract. Chaos will follow, and that's what's happened. So it's important that residents see that we care. And we can change these perceptions with a concerted and coordinated bureau-wide effort, what I have named Portland Clean and Green. And it's based off of an existing model that was done very successfully in Philadelphia, where they went through the entire city of Philadelphia, neighborhood by neighborhood, in coordination with community-based and non-profit, community-based organization and nonprofit organizations. They picked up the trash, they cleaned up the graffiti, they got rid of the abandoned cars, they reestablished a sense of pride in their city by doing that. And that is what I feel is very missing from our city right now, that sense of pride. And so by implementing this immediately, citywide, this cleanup, this Clean and Green program initiative that I'm proposing, we can get back to a foundational level where we can start to think big and we can have with us as allies the rest of the city, the Portland residents, because they will be participating in this and they need to have that sense of pride reestablished.
Thank you. Tony.
In twenty twenty-three, Portland recorded three hundred and one overdose deaths. Every single one of those was preventable, and every overdose that might occur in the future is preventable as well. This number that I'm talking about is the result of a toxic and poisoned drug supply like we've not seen before in the past. It's a lack of prevention in Oregon. We spend less than one percent of our state budget on prevention efforts. And it's a lack of treatment on demand. So what I'm very focused on is creating a coordinated Office of Addiction Response. And it is essential now, especially in light of how House Bill four thousand two structurally has put the city and the county closer together. The city is the input into this new system around deflection, and the county needs to be prepared to receive them, folks, that is, who are entering into the deflection option, and help align them with supportive services centered around addiction and recovery. So part of how we got here is this fragmented and siloed approach that is endemic in Oregon. It's a lot of left hand and right hand not knowing what the other is doing with regard to behavioral health. And just to provide some context, when the ninety-day fentanyl emergency concluded, Mayor Wheeler remarked how helpful it was to have everyone in one room coordinating with one another. And he's right, but this doesn't need to be done in ninety-day increments, it needs to be done on a permanent basis. We need elements from the city, the county, the state, we need providers. Importantly, we need payers. The CCOs ought to be at the table. We need people from recovery housing, we need peers, we need folks from public safety and the DA's office because of this new framework provided by House Bill four thousand two. What that is going to allow us to do is create a more cohesive and comprehensive response that hits all the touchpoints along the continuum.
Is this, so your first, the question was, what's your first?
It's an Office of Addiction Response.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Creation of an Office of Addiction Response. Yes.
Thank you.
So doing this will help close these deficits between different stakeholders along the continuum of care and public safety. This is not just a command center, it's also a funding aggregator. My point about including CCOs, Care Oregon earlier this year put up half a million dollars that's now paying for buprenorphine that's being distributed by Portland firefighters to folks on the streets who are in crisis. That sort of thing is life-saving, and I would like to see more CCOs step up and partner with local government.
Right, great. Ben, and I'm going to give you more than a minute, everybody else has had.
I'm going to go long, so I'm going to try to finish in two and then ask me questions. Permitting, permitting, permitting. We have a housing crisis here. We have a real housing crisis here. We've had a housing crisis, as Sarah said, since twenty fifteen. Every year we renew it, sometimes it's two years, but we renew it all the time. We got a housing crisis. Does it affect me? Does it affect you? Maybe not. We own our houses, we have three percent mortgage rates, but it affects the city and it affects us dramatically. Portland is becoming a place that regular people can no longer afford to live, we are well on our way to becoming San Francisco. I feel deeply about this. I've built more housing than anybody who's ever been on city council, I've permitted it, I've been an architect for it. I'm not a housing specialist, but I have done more. And I understand permitting, Sarah understands permitting, I've done three hundred permits, at least in the city of Portland. We have a permitting problem. The short answer to your question is, the state requires a one hundred and twenty-day land use review, yes or no, on every land use, when you, every land use decision, which includes permitting? When you come in for a permit at the city of Portland for housing, you are handed a piece of paper that says, I waive my rights to that. And you have to sign it or you will get turned out. This is ridiculous, it's been in place since nineteen ninety-six. Your average permitting time for an apartment building is five hundred and one days plus six months of design review. That's three years. I don't know what the interest rate's going to be three years from now, neither do you. So we have effectively killed housing development in Portland, and I'll tell you the numbers. The state and the city both feel that we need, and I agree, six thousand units built every year, and we're sixty-four hundred units behind. That happens magically to correspond to about the number of people who are in crisis on the street and in temporary housing. Those, it's not a coincidence.
No, it's not magical at all. Like, that's obviously linked.
Right. We're falling six thousand behind every year. In twenty twenty-four, we built fourteen hundred and eighty-four units. This year, we're slated to open fewer than five hundred. I'm not, when I say we, I'm talking about Portlanders. I'm not talking about the city of Portland. I'm not proposing that the city of Portland build housing. We have effectively stopped housing. Ask me about Carmen.
What has Carmen improved the situation with her initiatives?
Carmen got a layup from Dan Ryan, who did a lot of work. He did a lot of work on the city housing, permitting, consolidation, et cetera. She's taken credit for it, she deserves it, she made the right step. The Portland Housing Capacity Study that was passed on August twenty-eighth, I testified for that, I said it's a great first step, but it's not enough. I believe Carmen wants the right thing, she's running on a housing platform. We have, she's put in the bureaus under one direction, it's really important. We probably made five percent of the steps we need to make to accelerate housing. Okay.
Good, thank you.
That's a super interesting proposal.
And there's more.
I mean, to be honest with you, we could probably talk about housing permitting for like an hour and a half, and I wouldn't be bored, so.
Okay, we'll follow up.
We'll follow up.
This is an enormous existential crisis for Portland.
Like, me moving on is not a sign that I'm not interested in this, we're going to follow up on your proposal and get more details.
Okay.
I'm going to have you answer the next question first.
Okay.
Did we get everybody?
Yes. And I'll talk slower on the next question.
Wait, can I just, quick, interim question?
Sure.
So we have two people here who work, have worked in the city, in the county.
Three.
Three, three. Okay. I feel like in this election, this, these seats are attracting a lot of outsiders, people from other industries who have never worked in government, and, you know, they come in and they say things like, we're governing by press release. And Eric, are we governing by press release?
In large parts, yes.
We are?
Yes, thank you, Eric. I think.
I mean, you were there working with.
Yeah, I think.
Eric does the best at press releases, like you're doing effective stuff, so that wasn't a criticism of Eric.
Yeah, I think, I think that there are a host of folks who are still governing, because governing is when they were elected in twenty eighteen, right? They're governing from a position where we are in crisis, they're governing from a position where they think long-drawn-out processes is the right solution for our community.
Wouldn't we get afford that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, just that, that there was no response by so many elected officials in the years of crisis. I think it took Ted Wheeler being in his second term and choosing not to seek a third. I think it took a change at Multnomah County, getting Julia Vermeth in there and frankly, talk about, I mean, cultural shift. And we have three electeds who will come into that board next year who are governing from the crisis that is twenty twenty-four and not from the kind of laissez-faire time of twenty eighteen. But I think a lot of people were found on their heels. When I, when I came back to the city in two thousand twenty-two, and the mayor asked me to lead on starting the recovery of downtown, I'll just tell you, Anthony, going to bureaus and trying to get them to do the right thing was incredibly difficult, because there was not the acceptance or the admission that we had a problem. And.
That seems unbelievable.
It was unbelievable, and I think you know some of the stuff that I had to go through to get there. And when you find a bureau that wants to work on something powerful and important and move in that direction, so Fourth and Washington, shutting down that drug market, was an example where everybody said in the city and the community, we have a problem. And I said, okay, so I'm.
Remember we said that?
You said that, and I said, so why haven't we addressed it? And the code enforcement people that worked in BDS had been told, you're not going to enforce codes on that type of thing. That's not, that's not fair to enforce codes on derelict buildings. Police certainly can't do that job alone, and so to just say, we're going to shut down a building without the cover of it, the fire folks in terms of all the other stuff, that type of code. So I organized it, right? And I said, BDS, you have all the rules, you don't need any more tools, right? I don't need any more tools, Eric. Okay, what do you need? I need permission to go do my job. Okay, got it. So I got the mayor and Carmen Rubio to sign a joint memo that says, we authorize you to do your job and go shut down Fourth and Washington, you were there with us. It took that, and it was really, it's an, it's an example of where our bureaus and others across the city have been kneecapped by the politics at the five fiefdoms. We're moving away from that, which is really good, because there will be a single point of decision-making at the top. And when it comes to operations, single decision-making at the top is super important.
Okay. Sorry, I got to, because we got to keep moving on the group questions. Joint Office of Homeless Services, and we're going to try to keep this quick.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks, I've been trying. Do, do you think that the city should still be in the Joint Office of Homeless Services, and what would cause you to say that we shouldn't? Tony, we'll have you go first, and then we'll move this direction.
Sure. We should stay in for the time being, and we need to hold the county accountable. And that means if we aren't hitting the metrics that we have as a city put out as our expectation, we need to talk about accountability, and that means up to and including removing the city's investment.
Thank you.
Ben?
Well done, Tony. I agree a hundred percent with responsibility and accountability. There are things the city is responsible for, there are things the county is responsible for, they get blurred with the notion of a joint office. We need accountability, we need metrics, and we need to move forward. I have talked to Anthony about something related to this before, but leadership at the county and the Deflection Center and Joint Offices of Human Services is one of the reasons I'm running. We have sheer incompetence at the upper level, we are spending two million dollars on a building that needs a seismic upgrade and it will not open, we have an enormous crisis going on with the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we do need to stay in, we can't, the city cannot solve the problem of houselessness on its own. We have to make coordination with the county work. We know that it has not been working very well and that our constituents are very frustrated by the investment they've put into solving this problem and seeing the problem not be solved or not be addressed effectively. So we do need to work together to make sure we're acting with more urgency. And as someone who has worked my entire career working on emergencies, from war-torn countries to gun violence here in Portland, I can bring that approach of acting with more urgency. One of the things that we would say when I worked abroad is it's better to be eighty percent right at the right time than one hundred percent right too late. And I think we need to bring more of that approach to our cooperation with the Joint Office and to a response to this crisis, that we can act with urgency and tolerate some imperfection and some risk-taking while actively learning from what we're doing and improving and iterating.
Sarah, thank you.
I think I would like to see one more year extension with a new city council and with a majority new county commission. If the county and the Joint Office can deliver on better outcomes instead of talking about only their outputs, if they can actually open the shelters that they've been funded to open, if the county overall, it's not just in Joint Office, but if the county overall makes reasonable investments in opening more treatment beds and more mental health beds, because I think that contributes to the mission of the Joint Office, the Sobri Center. And, and ultimately, the county has protected for too long legacy providers, so I would really like to see providers who are showing good outcomes and better effectiveness with the dollars, let's fund them more, reduce our reliance on, on legacy providers. If we can do that, then I think the city can stay a part of it, it's a good investment of our dollars. If we can't, I'll write the ordinance myself to have us pull it out after, but I think one year is good for the new council.
Great. Sarah.
Similar to what Eric is saying, I was thinking six months. Six months from when the new council starts, we build the relationship, but we also put them on notice that people are not satisfied with the performance so far. We've been hearing, we're going to provide a thousand new beds, and then what happens? And we also need to make it very public that the money for mental health services and drug addiction services is with the county, not with the city. We can coordinate with that, I mean, that's handing people over, that's not like, we create mental health service. That's not like we create mental health services. So I say six months, and we need to have a timeline. We need to see these deliverables, and if we haven't made progress, then we're out.
Great. Kelly?
I think in all of this discussion, I haven't heard anyone mention a trio. Does everyone know what a trio is?
It's three.
No. It's when you do real estate or whatever, you get the property description, you get the ownership, and you figure out who that is. I have several trios going with the title company because a previous commissioner had gotten free office space, and I thought that was very special. So I wanted to get free office space. Well, the trouble isn't anything like that. You have to go back to the foundation. You have to go before the policy. You have to figure out how the rivers run. You have to figure out why Luba was started and why people love Luba. Oregonians will, you know, the land use board. I remember sleeping in property class when Paul Giver explained to me how Luba worked. And then when I got my real estate license, of course, before I was an attorney. So I had that in the 70s and 80s.
The question is, are you staying in the joint office?
I'm getting there. We have to stay in, and we have to work with the county. But we have to know how to work with the county and how to respect each other.
Thank you. Thanks.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you. I think we need to stay in the joint office for the near term, whatever that is, a year. We need to have increased accountability, increased transparency. And there also has to be an end to the dictatorship at the county level, where the county chair ignores input from her fellow commissioners, from the city, from professionals and others when decisions are being made. You asked, and if that doesn't happen, as I said, and I think in my response to your questionnaire, if the relationship continues to be toxic, if there isn't adequate coordination and honest cooperation, then divorce is in order. The city needs to pull out. You asked about governing by press release. Well, just look at all the plans the county has put out, plan after plan after plan. A good example, most recent, is the deflection plan, where at a press conference, the county chair was asked, "How will you know if somebody has successfully bid through the deflection program?" The answer was essentially, "Oh, I have a watch and a coat on." She could not answer the question, and that's what's happening. There's, so if it continues, I favor pulling out.
Thank you. I am not satisfied with the relationship. It feels as JOHS is following its own strategy versus a city-centric strategy. The relationship between the city and the county has been a topic I have raised with former Oregon governors as well as everyday Portlanders. First, the city government needs to reset our relationship with rural co. We are electing 12 new city councillors and new county commissioners, and we can begin to foster a new working relationship based on communication and shared values and priorities. I would propose that a councillor from each district is assigned to lobby and collaborate with our Monmouth County colleagues in dealing with the issues that affect both of these jurisdictions. That group could then work with the county on program metrics, accurate accounting, both financially and with the populations being helped, and then report back to us to achieve consent from the full city council. We need that same type of group for dealing with metro, the state government, and the federal government. Finally, as we, as the new council, we have to reserve the option of not funding JOHS if the county refuses to see us as a partner.
Great. Thank you. Sophie, you want to run the lightning round?
Uh, yeah.
I'll try. Lightning round.
Let's see if I can pull them up. I probably have them.
We're getting more lightning-like as we go along.
Okay.
Well, if you're in lightning, oh, one-word answers?
One-word answers. One to two. You cannot go over two, though, or we'll cut you off.
We're gonna bang a gong.
Does the Portland Police Bureau have, should the Portland Police Bureau have more officers, fewer officers, or the same amount as it currently does? Let's start with you, Sarah.
They should fill the positions they have.
Fill vacancies. Okay.
Fill vacancies.
More.
More.
Many more.
More. It's a mix.
Okay. Out of the current members of the city council, which commissioner has done the most for the city? Let's start with you, Kelly.
Matt.
Renee Gonzalez.
I'd say Dan Ryan.
Dan Rand.
Gonzalez.
Wheeler.
I think Dan Rand.
Ooh, maps.
Dan does well in these. Dan does well in this.
I know.
That's because he's a peer. We like Dan. We do like him.
Dark horse.
Based on your knowledge of city hall, what bureau or office would you most like to audit? Not because you think it's doing well, because you think it's doing poorly, or you're suspicious, or you think there's...
Don't make Sarah go first.
Let's start with you.
BDS, Bureau of Development Services.
Lisa.
P-Bot.
P-Bot also.
Oh, M-S.
Kelly?
Water.
Um, P-Bot.
Water Bureau as it relates to filtration plan.
Okay.
P-Bot.
As it stands now, do you support the city's fine place and manner rules? Eric, let's start with you.
Yes.
Sarah?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Let's start with you. No. Okay. No. Okay.
No, no.
Does the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing hard drugs? Let's start with you, Moses.
No, they did not.
Okay.
Yes, that will save lives.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Irrelevant.
Why?
Because there's no treatment. You can't deflect into something that doesn't exist.
That's very wise.
Agree.
Okay.
Yes.
I say no.
No. Okay. Well, just keep on.
We can change our answer. Hey, these aren't lightning. You're doing well.
What were my other lightning ones?
Can I ask a lightning one?
Yeah.
Did the city do the right thing by approving the permit for Live Nation building a venue? You spoke first, so I'm gonna, you're gonna go first.
Okay. I don't love Live Nation, but the city needs energy, and that is energy. Yes.
No.
Don't want them?
No.
Okay.
I think so. I haven't followed it super close in terms of why.
You gotta read the laminate week.
Yeah, I tried, man, but I got lost.
I spent a lot of time covering this stuff. You gotta read it. Okay.
Not my area of expertise.
Okay. Okay, we'll take it.
Faking.
Okay?
No.
No?
No, they did not. No, I did not.
The question was, did they do the right thing?
Yeah. You say no?
I did say no.
Because of Live Nation's business practices, or...
Because of that, but more importantly to me, its potential impact on local musicians and small venues.
What he said, for my answer.
Yes, and following back to something else, there's not enough treatment. It's not accurate to say there is no treatment.
Yep.
Okay. Who is the one person at this table that you would most like to serve alongside on the city council?
Should we write that down?
Eric? They're just right in front of me.
Wow.
I'll go first. I'd rather serve with Sophie than Aaron.
I love that.
It's at the table.
I sit next to Sophie. I don't know. We're reporting.
Okay, so I have some good relationships at this table in District 4. I'm gonna say Ben, and the reason, can I give a reason?
That's your brief.
For what I want to do in housing reform and permitting reform, I'm looking for somebody that has the most complementary set of skills on that topic, and I think he brings a wealth that will help me.
Great. Thanks. Sarah?
It is a stinker. It is a stinker.
It's a stinker.
Thanks for going first.
Thanks, Eric.
Lisa? Okay. Kelly? Sarah? Okay. Bob?
Having worked with council members across the political spectrum and given that we have some great candidates here.
It's like, this is like the Oscars.
My answer is Ben, for his housing and permitting expertise.
Moses?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Who is the one person in this room that you would most like to serve alongside?
Who is the first, who is the person in this room that I would most like to work with?
I don't think they count.
And none of us.
No danger there.
Sophie.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Ben, may I answer, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would say Eric Zimmerman, quite frankly. He's got the experience.
Tony?
I would say Eric. Eric and I have worked together before, and I know that we can generate good results. I helped push the county to move ahead on more recovery housing, and I know that Eric and I have complementary skill sets. He has executive experience. I have legislative experience.
Great. Ben?
Brother Bob, one second.
Okay. Lisa?
Sarah, did you know that there have only been 10 women who have ever served on Portland City Council? Women are shown to be more collaborative, bring more back to their districts, and I value her experience. I also value Tony's experience, so that was a tough one.
I'd actually like to expand this question just a little bit. Out of all the candidates in Mr. Core, not just the people in this room, who would you most like to serve alongside? Let's start with Tony.
Olivia, because of the importance of legislative experience.
Okay, Ben?
Brother Bob.
Okay. Lisa?
I've really come to respect Mitch and his, as an economist, I think we need that perspective.
Okay.
Olivia.
Okay. Sarah?
Chad Lichten's, okay.
The cop.
You like.
We call him the cop, too.
No, you can, no, just expanding the pool.
Brother Bob.
Okay.
Are we, okay. This is not insidious. Once again, I'd like to work with Eric, because I know that he has the depth of experience of working at the county, and we've got some issues as far as the city-county relationship.
Okay. Did I start with Tony?
Yeah.
Or you answered the question?
You can answer again.
Olivia.
Okay. Hasn't changed.
No. Remains the same.
That's all my quick questions.
That's good. Do we have any individual questions for our individual candidates at this point?
You know, I did.
Well, I'm curious. For the people, you three have all worked in city hall. Like, I think a lot of the city commissioners in recent years have basically blamed their inability to get things done on the current form of government. Is that fair, or do you think that's a bit of a cop-out?
It's totally a cop-out. It's totally a cop-out, because it's relationships. And, you know, whether it's a council of 12 or a council of five, whether you're, you know... Sure, it doesn't lend itself. It allows you to misbehave, but everybody is responsible for their own behavior. And instead of coming in and saying, "Oh, this is a toxic environment," they could have come in and said, "Hey, this is kind of messed up, but I'm gonna start new. I'm gonna make good relationships with my other councillors. I'm gonna be responsible to the entire city, not just the organizations that I have direct control over."
Lisa?
I think it's fair. Our form of government is really dysfunctional, and when we're facing complex problems that involve coordination across not just bureaus but service areas, it is really impossible, as Eric was saying, to get things done. Or it's very, very difficult to get things done. However, I would add that it's been very disappointing to see how the current council, while saying that, is also undermining a lot of the transition to the new form of government and holding on to their power instead of moving forward into the new form of government that there would supposedly solve the problems.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, yeah. I have another lightning.
I do think it's a problem. I think that Ted Wheeler having to sign an emergency declaration to give his staff and the impact reduction team and SSCC team the authority to work across bureaus and tell commissioners, "I know you don't want to, but we're going to." I think that's an example of having to have executive decision-making in a pyramid. So I think it's a fair criticism, and I think that we've asked people... There's a constituency based on each bureau, right? There's a Viking constituency, environmental constituency. There are neighborhood involvement constituencies. But those become the listening and echo chamber just for those bureaus that are involved. And I think that there's big, hard decision-making to make when you have to two priorities across an $8.2 billion budget, across almost 700,000 people. Five fiefdoms can't do that. So great people who have served in the past, very dysfunctional system.
I have a quick follow-up.
You go for it.
The city always blames the county. The county always blames the city. You've been on both sides.
Yeah.
Who does the worst job? You got to throw one of your bosses on the bus.
Oh, no. I'm firm, I mean, I went back to work at the county because it's in so much disarray. The county is and has been the problem for the last several, several years.
And what's the problem? Is there, are there priorities the problem? Is it communication? Is it the actual people in office? Like, what's the problem?
I think for 15 years, we have, as a community, built a culture at the county that very much put forward the idea that accountability, enforcement, these types of words were bad in the way that we worked with folks who are most vulnerable in the community. We moved away from creating things in the city, like single-room occupancy units, which are actually a very important step in housing, because they were a competition with apartments that are fully vested out. We didn't buy shelters and invest in the shelter capacity strategy, because we put out there into the community that somehow shelter was competing with housing dollars. And we are sitting where we're at because of the county's cultural change over the last 15 years.
How would you grade JDP?
What's below an F?
F.
I'm gonna make this a question for everybody. I like it too much.
How would you grade JDP? Eric will start with you.
She's at a D.
Okay. Sarah, F. Wow.
I didn't...
How did you grade County Chair Jessica Vega-Petersen? How would you grade her performance?
I think it's a B minus.
B minus. Okay.
She's really trying, and everyone, I mean, we're all B minus right now, because we're all trying to get things where they should be, and none of us know the right path.
I might be a C plus, honestly.
Bob?
My mother will dread it. I think I would give her a D minus, thinking she must have done something good during the tenure.
Okay, Moses?
I'm gonna do the C plus for effort. I'm gonna give her an F for implementation.
Okay. Tony?
She's at a D, but she has time to bring her grade up.
Okay.
What's below an F?
Okay, drop out.
C, it's not a quality review, but these are really, really tough problems. And I'm not certain that there are others who would have done it better.
Eric, the reason you're running for the city and not the county is because the districts are oriented in a way where Julia is in the district you would run for, right? Is that why you're not seeking a county seat?
No. Sharon, you'd be in, you're in.
Yeah, it would be the Deam and Megan race if I was running for county.
Yeah, why aren't you running in that race?
I like city issues, and I like working on city issues, I think, more than I do on county issues. So we talk a lot about sheltering and homelessness and public safety. I think, I think working on public safety issues has been very rewarding for me personally. I like getting into that work. I also think economic development and talking about housing is something that is part of why I live in the neighborhoods I've lived. Social services are important, but it hasn't been where I feel I've personally made the biggest difference. And so for me, that's the city.
Okay. Nice. I have a follow-up on that.
Okay.
This is really quick. We used to be, it used to be, well, Portland, it's, you know, "Keep Portland Weird" was kind of our slogan, right? But Tim Walz changed that around a little bit. Means something different.
I love Tim Walz.
If you had to come up with a slogan for Portland, because, I mean, talking about economic development, I mean, a lot of this is like branding and, you know, what are... development, I mean, a lot of this is like branding and, you know, what are we? What is your short slogans, short elevator pitch for Portland right now to get us back on track, and let's start there?
Let's revitalize Portland.
Okay.
Portland's ready for a comeback.
Build a better city.
Portland's moving forward.
Fuck it, we're Portland.
All right.
A bad word, we're Portland, that's okay, move on.
I just like how much Sarah enjoyed that.
This is why we hired marketing agencies, because I'm not the guy.
Yeah.
That's why I need to meet.
Portland gets shit done.
Oh, we're doing the cussing round.
Kelly Doyle knows the difference between dirt and soil. Portland.
All right.
Nice. Let's go to Portland.
All right. We're moving to the, finally, you might have thought that was the fun question, but here is the fun question.
Wait, sorry, can I have one more?
Oh, we're gonna stop with no more fun?
Well, we have three minutes.
We do?
Yeah.
We were really good.
You have been really good. This has been fun. This has been, this might be the best panel so far on keeping to time.
I'm curious, you're running against two other Oregon Recovers people, and it all seems like all three of you are sort of running on, not necessarily a recovery platform, but part of your campaign has been, you know, we need a recovery candidate who understands what it's actually like. Why are you instead of Mike Marshall or Jesse Cornet?
So, uh, yes, we are running in different districts, and addiction exists in every part of the city, but I would point to a difference in style and a difference in approach. And when I talk about the addiction crisis, I talk about it being a public safety issue and a public health issue. I would point out that I've earned endorsements from the Portland Police Association and Nathan Vasquez. I'm also endorsed by Andy Minden Hall and Tony Vesna, among others, in behavioral health and recovery. Mike and Jesse don't have that broad spectrum of support that we really need in order to collaborate on this critical issue. And I would point to the outcomes that I generated in the 2023 legislative session, and just ask you to compare my approach and results to Mike and Jesse's.
And he's not actually running against them.
Right, they could all win.
Sure, but I, yes.
Sophie, can I please follow up with a related thing in my time? Can I do one? There are, out of the 25 top candidates, there are three people running from Oregon Recovers. If you look at all of the top 25 fundraising candidates, the people who've made the threshold, et cetera, there are only three people from the private sector, three. From the top 12 fundraising candidates who are believable candidates, there's only one, and that's me.
I would disagree. I'm kind of a small business owner for the last 20 years, too, Ben, so, you know...
I'm a former small business owner.
Do I have enough, you had to answer the former government question that was down?
What was the former government question? Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, because I would, I think you asked if it's the current form of government that has resulted in some of the problems. That may be true for some, but it's not true for, for some others. And I'll give you a couple examples. What, let's go back to the permitting issue, okay? I was at a meeting, another meeting, with the interim city administrator and the higher-ups in the new service area, and there were builders there and developers and some other people in the room. And they went over how this new service area was gonna result in wondrous results. Well, there was a builder there who said, I've had a permit for duplex with no issues, and in the time that it's been sitting in your offices, I built 100 homes in Oregon City, and I'm not gonna build another home in Portland until you fix it. Whereupon, I followed up with a reference to San Diego, which had just reduced its permitting time to, from like, like 120 days or something, to 30 days for some affordable housing and commercial projects. So I, I referenced that, and then I said to this new group, what is your goal for permitting time for a project that comes in the door, has no issues? They could not answer. They don't have a goal. So, it's governing by press release.
So I have to add, I just have to say this. We've talked so much about permitting, I don't know, I did a story about this guy, I'm not flogging my own work, this is terrible guy. Michael Gregory tried to build a 12-unit complex, low-income, in Foster Powell neighborhood, and he had such a problem that he sent us the, maybe the greatest tip email we have ever, I've ever gotten, and it just said, I would rather kick myself in the balls 100 times than do this again. And I went and interviewed this guy, and it was a staggering story of dysfunction, and, I mean, he will not build in Portland again.
Anyway, my second example is something that I think Willamette Week highlighted, the Kirby Street P bot garage, where despite asset managers for many years saying, you gotta fix this, and it got to a crisis point where mechanics were working in unsafe conditions, number one, where the city has a policy to move to electric vehicles, but they knew or should have known, I mean, Chloe Daley was at P bot, Harrison, Minus Maps, maybe their predecessors.
Yeah.
And the mayor was quoted, I think, in your story, saying, well, we didn't address it because fixing or replacing garage is not sexy, or we don't get political capital. I don't remember what the quote was, but that's not just because of the former government. That could happen under any government where the elected officials ignore information like that. That's the point I wanted.
Yep, good.
And I just want to point out, it's not just P bot, it's not just B D S, it's all of the bureaus. Like, I talk, I mean, I talk to other workers and hear the same stories over and over again.
How many days should Portland workers be in the office? Quick, quick one, everybody.
I repeat the question.
How many days a week should Portland city staff be in, physically in the office?
The staff, not us, but the workers.
You guys, everybody.
How often should city council members be in the office?
Okay. Staff is the question.
Let's say staff.
Three.
Three, three days a week?
Three.
50% time.
Four.
50%.
Two days a week.
I'd say three to five.
Full-time downtown.
Depends on the role.
That's a cop-out.
It's a hedge, Sophie. I mean, if you make it high...
It's certainly... Well, it's an issue, right? I mean, I mean, if, I think if the public, if the public knew that our most in-crisis
moment in our community was being dealt with by a bunch of joint office employees who don't come to work, and it's coming from their kitchen table, I think they'd lose their collective minds.
They, they do know that. We wrote like 14 stories of that.
And, and...
And they don't care, because the public doesn't care about anything.
Thank you for running for office.
Yes. You know, it came up in, it came up in Union in Oregon.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Now, that right there is the problem, is the cynicism that we have established within the city of Portland residents about the incompetence of our city government. And it's up to us, as new city councilors, to counteract that so that you can actually feel some pride in our city.
Yes.
That cynicism is what has brought us to this point.
That cynicism has brought me to this point for certain.
What difference does it make where you are? What matters is whether you're getting your job done.
Well, talk to some small business people downtown who are failing.
Well, talk to the people in neighborhoods who appreciate people coming to their coffee shops.
So I just...
And there's, there's greenhouse gas reduction, like, having people live and work near each other, near, in the same place, is important, and have, we're not going to, it's not just city employees, this is a national trend, this is all office workers, and you're not gonna solve downtown's problems.
So many companies are making people come back five days, J P Morgan, Facebook.
Well, see, I mean, in fact, in two ways, and this is new to us.
I do think, I do think that productivity is lower. I think that in experience, in my own experience, I think productivity is lower for, on large work, teams don't come into work. And I think that permitting and this type of problem, this is why I'm not looking, and I don't think that we're gonna solve these large permitting fiefdom problems from the inside, because I think there's a whole constituency on the inside who's trying to protect the system that we're all complaining about. This is not an inside...
There are incentives to make it go slower.
Can I comment on this? If we're gonna revitalize downtown, the city has to set an example, number one. Number two, at that other meeting where the permitting people were there, some of the builders, developers said, apparently, if I, if Sophie worked for the city but worked at home, the city's phone number rings, no answer, no answer after no answer after no answer. The only way to change that is to get people back in the office so that a builder or developer can come in and have a conversation. No more hiding at home on the parts of some people. And I do want to point out one thing, too.
Hold on, you've been trying to get something.
Well, I just wanted to give a little context to my, my answer, Sophie. I mean, the, the role is meaningful, because we have first responders who don't have the option of working from home. And so when we have parking enforcement officers, police officers, firefighters, that have to come in regardless of weather conditions, regardless of whether we're in the middle of a pandemic, we need to make sure that we have a council and government that's giving them the support they need to do the job to protect the community, their service.
Okay, but the fire marshal's office is open 12, 12 hours a week.
But we have, we have...
Fire marshal office, to get an occupant, fire marshal, the office of the fire marshal.
12 hours a week?
12 hours a week.